We're going live and we're live. Hello, guys.
Alright, hey, everyone.
How's it going?
Alright, welcome to our Alright, welcome to our World History AP Modern Study Session. My name is Jed and
I'm Jamal Willis.
And we're gonna go over, once again, this is our study session, so keep it tuned. Alright, Jamal's gonna introduce stuff.
Okay, guys, if you're not familiar with Fivable, you can follow us on Instagram, YouTube, or Twitter, and just kind of spread that Fivable thought, thinking around, so that we have more attendees here, and we can help you guys with AP World History, AP Calculus, all the AP subjects that you know of. Fivable offers. Next slide. Okay, let me give you a brief introduction into Fivable. If you're not familiar with it, well, I'm just gonna explain it for you. So Fivable is basically a connection with students and teachers across the nation and the globe. If you guys know about Twitch, it's kind of like a Twitch, but for AP kids. That's how I like to explain it. And it just offers a boundless interaction and information that can be very helpful when it comes to taking the AP test in May. And it just, it's about you guys and helping you guys, trying to strive when it comes to taking that AP test and giving you all the skills and resources it takes for you guys. Okay, next slide. Next slide is about membership. So if you guys want Fivable offers, it offers a lot of past streams and previous documents that can be very helpful when it comes to taking the AP test. And it also offers a grading census, like a grading material down there for both teachers and students, and it's only five dollars. So that's a very reasonable cost, I think, and it's gonna be very beneficial to you guys as well. So I would recommend that you guys take advantage of this and just try to follow along. Next slide. Okay, these are upcoming live streams that Fivable also does when it comes to AP World. So tomorrow, the sixteenth, you'll have Continuities in the Americas with Skylar at 3:00 PM, and then at 5:00 PM, you'll have Daral Islam with Don, Donald Duarte. Yeah. And then at 5:00 PM again, you'll have China in the Global Middle Ages with Patrick Yeah, I got that right. And then you have Thinking Thematically with Ali at 9:00 PM. And so if you guys are interested in that, you guys should really check that out and support Fivable when it comes to AP World. Okay, when it comes to this stream, we'll be understanding the course when it comes to AP World. We'll be going into depth about the purpose of the exam and the actual realization, because some people tend to go in the exam not knowing what to expect, and we'll just cover that and just lift that basis or like that surface area, so you guys will get the full understanding. Also, I will offer one of my tips that I use while taking the AP exam, and I thought that was very beneficial, because analyzing the textbook is one of the most important things that you guys can do when it comes to studying for AP World. Jed, you can handle Block Two. Do you want to?
Yeah, don't worry. It's not that I'm just hanging around here. We're gonna talk later. And we're gonna talk about, we're gonna talk about an overview, a real quick overview on Units Zero and One, which is before the 1200s and between 1200 to 1450. And then we're gonna have like a little section of tips and tricks on going into the course in like a refresher, and then we're gonna have our Q and A session at the end, so don't worry. Alright. Jamal's on stage again, so.
Guys, before we go any further, I put a poll in the area below. If you guys should just take that, and if you have any questions before we get into this, I will try to answer them as I go along. So yeah, let's begin. Okay, the purpose of AP World is to help students to better understand the evolution of global processes and the interactions between people across the globe. So what this simply means is that you're gonna unravel the most significant parts of history, mainly for AP Modern. I know it cuts off into a certain area, so you guys are gonna be focusing more on the modern aspect, and this will help you guys to focus on your social aspects, your political aspects, your interactions, your cultural aspects, and the economic aspects when it comes to finding the underlying message of AP World. And let me check if there are any questions. No questions yet, but it's okay. Yeah. Next slide. The realization of the AP test. Okay, the AP World test has one of the largest knowledge that I know of, and when I've talked to many of my colleagues, they've said that it's a lot of content and it's a lot of studying. But once you have a real grasp on what you're learning, you'll actually understand it. The test is really hard. Yeah, it is really hard, especially when you're writing your DBQs, your FRQs, and your LE, I mean, SEQs and your LEQs. That could be a real struggle, but if you really try to understand the text and if you really try and find those key terms and those key phrases throughout world history while you're studying that, then I think that you guys can grasp the concept. Studying is key. That is really, really important. You're no, you have no idea how many times that my AP World teacher stressed that, because she knew how much knowledge it took for us to just pass that test and how much knowledge that we were gonna need to be prepared for the test. And so I'm just gonna try and help you guys understand how much of studying it will take and how analyzing the text can further help you with your studying. Analyze the textbook thoroughly, yes. And I will get more into that in my upcoming slides. And then I can't really see down there. Hold on. Key concepts. Key concepts. What I did when it came to studying for the AP World, I had a list of the key concepts that were given by College Board, so that I never strayed from the topic that I was learning and I never went too far out of line. I mean, it's good that you guys understand everything, but if you guys don't grasp the key concepts, then you won't know actually what the, what you want to obtain or the answers you want when it comes to taking that AP test in May. Uh, yeah, next slide. Okay, studying for the AP test. I put ensuring that you understand the textbook and connect the reading with your key concepts. Yeah, so that's the studying tip I will be giving you guys today. Understanding the textbooks and aligning yourself with the key concepts is how you guys are gonna do good on that AP test. When it came to studying, I made sure that I understood everything and that I made my notes align with those key concepts, because I knew that without that, I myself would not have been as prepared as other students. So I will just share my study tips with you guys, and hopefully they resonate with you, so you guys could use them. And if they don't, then you guys should just hold that with you and keep it in your mind as well. I know Jed has his study tips or overview that he'll be going into, so just wait for that, guys. Next slide. Analyzing the textbook. So what I would recommend when you get your textbook or when you've gotten your textbook, the first thing you do is you preview. So you're gonna look at all the titles, all the pictures, and all the key concepts in the book the first day. So when I analyzed my textbook, this was a three-day process, and so analyzing those titles was key, because it also gave you the time period in which you guys needed to study. And, and pictures, when it came to that, having that visualization in your head also assisted me in like creating images that would help me when it came to taking the AP test, 'cause when like they talked about the Mongols, I just remember seeing a picture from my textbook about them being brutal or them being one of, like, you know how the Mongols were. I mean, not yet, but yeah, Jed knows how the Mongols were. They were very brutal and just having that visualization in my head really helped me in taking the AP test. Key concepts. Key concepts, key concepts, key concepts. My teacher reiterated that to us so many times that we had to know the key concepts back and forth in order to pass the AP test. And that was very hard at first, because you were trying to study and analyze your textbooks while at the same times reviewing these key concepts, and it was kind of a struggle for me, but how I did it was I tried to, with every chapter I read, I tried to review that key concepts or key concepts daily or weekly. And so there was a strategy I used. It was seven, twenty-four, seven. So right after class, I would review key concepts seven minutes, and then the next time it would be twenty-four hours, and then after that it would be seven days. And that just, seeing those key concepts again and again and again, just made it like a long, just made them stick to my long-term memory, and I never forgot those when it came to taking the test. I know I missed one. Oh, questions? If you guys have any questions when it comes to reading the textbook, make sure you guys note those or like put them at the side or put them on a little note so that you guys could go back and answer them. There are some questions in specific books that I know the AP testers or the people who make the AP test try to put in, like at the back of the book, I don't know, at the back of every chapter, there are some questions right there that they use. And I know I saw one or two or like three of them on the last AP test, and those just were really helpful, because I knew what questions were coming up and I knew what I would be going into, and that was super helpful for me. So you guys really need to check that out and really analyze your textbook when it comes to AP World. Next slide. So the second day, what I would, what I would suggest is that you guys just read the topic sentence, 'cause this will give you like an understanding of what you're going into, but it won't deter from the overlying message. I know you guys tend to read everything at once, because you probably don't have the time or you probably just, you don't want to read it at all. But you guys have to create these connections with your brain, these pathways, so that you guys understand everything that you're gonna read. So first day, you read the outline, I mean, you read the topics and you analyze the pictures and you look for all the questions in the book. Then the second day, you're just reading the topic sentence, and that's what, that's it. So now we're going on to the third day. Uh, hold on, I'm just checking for questions. Okay, there's none. Now, let me see the poll. Okay, many of you guys said your AP class is going good, and that's really good to hear. Nobody said bad, so that's great. Okay, read everything or read the overall message of your book the third day. This is gonna be very important, because you guys have gotten the topics. You guys have seen the pictures, you guys have seen everything. You've read the topic sentence. Now it's time for you guys to actually dive in to the book itself and analyze everything as a whole. This is gonna be very crucial, because if you guys like miss one step of this, then you guys probably won't understand everything you're learning, and then when it comes time for you to take a test, you're just like, oh, I missed this. Yeah. So I just think that you guys should try to, just really try and read your book and just, if you follow the steps that I have like suggested, then I think it will be very beneficial. Anything to add, Jed?
Hmm, yeah, but overall, I'm gonna add an overall, like the process is like, Jamal did a great job in outlining the process, like, you don't wanna, even if you don't have the time, at least read, actually, just try to look at the pictures. Like even if there are documents and even the AP teachers, AP teachers and even greater, even people who make tests use them in the actual exams. So you know the saying, a picture is worth a thousand words. So you can still catch up in the weekends, but let's say you have an important unit test, like, do what Jamal said, like read the topic sentences, read the outlines, read the headings, and then read the topic sentences, and then read overall. So that's a good strategy. You should try that. Like, I agree on that. Yeah.
Okay, next slide. I think this is yours, probably. Okay. Okay, when it comes to understanding these techniques, I really think that they're beneficial to you guys and just having different tools in your like toolbox at certain times will be very helpful. If you guys think this is an idea that you guys could use, maybe just think about it. You don't have to rush into it, 'cause I know you guys are just starting off, and it's just like the basics of what you're learning. But I think it'd be very helpful just knowing how to analyze the textbook and having those steps, creating those pathways to your brain could be very helpful. Next slide.
Alright, so that was Block One of this stream. So Jamal did it, once again, did a great job in re-reading why you're taking this class. At least have an idea of what you should be thinking when you leave the course, like how you apply it in real life, and realizing what the AP test is and how, once again, reading is key, studying is key, keeping up on your schedule is key. And then, once again, if you're, if you're just tired of your textbook, just look at the pictures. But if you have the time, like, don't waste it, just analyze your textbook. So, nice job. Now we're gonna go to Block Two, which is, we're gonna, in here, we're gonna focus on content recap on Units One and Two, I mean, Zero and One. And I'm gonna have some additional tips and tricks. It's more on, more in fix your mindset when it comes to AP World. And we're gonna, of course, we still have time for the Q and A. And once again, if you have questions, feel free to drop by through chat and very good. Let me see, a question? Okay, there's a question, so. Um, I think it's for Jamal, but I'm gonna read it. So on separate days, are you talking about per chapter or the textbook as a whole? For example, on the first day, you would be reading every single title, picture, and key concept throughout the whole book, so.
Okay, so it would be on separate days per chapter and not the textbook as a whole? I feel like if you read the textbook as a whole, you'll just get confused and not know what you're talking about, but okay, for the first day, you're just reading the outlines and like the titles, the pictures, and the key concepts. Then the second day, you're gonna read the topic sentence by itself. And then the third day, you're reading everything as a whole for that chapter. And that's how I would recommend it. I know your teachers have something else, but it's just a suggestion that you guys could use, or if you think it's like suitable for you. If it fits you, then you can try it. If not, it's just a suggestion.
Yeah, yeah, I usually like, our teacher does one chapter a week, so we cover, um, let's see if I have textbook, I don't, but we cover this huge textbook, so we go one chapter a week. So for me personally, I would stick with a chapter, because at least your teachers are on the same boat as you, where you can ask in class, instead of going ahead and not knowing what, I mean, not really knowing, but like not properly understanding, you're just reading. And I think it's better with a teacher or another student, older student, if you have someone as a guide, so, yeah. Any more to add, Jamal?
Uh, just, it's always good to read before, like your teachers, like when your teacher assigns it, you obviously wanna read before, ahead of time, so that you know where you're going into and you know the content. So yeah, I'm hoping that answers your question, Emily. Okay, you can continue, Jed.
Yep. Alright, so we're gonna proceed on Block Two once again. So we're just gonna really do a quick overview on Unit Zero. So I know world history is amazing, because you can just pick a random time period and you still have a lot to talk about. But if I had to describe Unit Zero in a nutshell, and I have like ten, I can like describe, I can condense it under ten words or phrases. Here's what I'll use. So you're gonna see, later on, you're gonna see some words, and I'm gonna explain it for you. So here are the key concepts, not concepts, key words or phrases you wanna think about while we're going. So once again, Unit Zero, this is before 1200 CE, so I'm thinking like really, really long time ago, so. Alright, let's start. So actually, before we go, so this is sort of a slippery slope thing. So we're also trying to develop your skills here in like critical thinking. So that's also another thing for somebody to stream next time. But we're also developing AP skills here, like knowing what caused an effect or how to compare stuff. So we're gonna go over that soon. So number one, we have agriculture. That's a thing before. So back in the day, people were hunter-gatherers, they were following the food. So whenever, when this discovered, they could sell it down and, you know, plant some crops. That, that was a huge boost forward for human history, for humanity, because they can just sell it down once again and not worry about surviving, because they have the food source. Next, we have job specialization. That's also, that's also a thing before. So once everyone's like done trying to find some food, you cannot have jobs. So one of you can do metalworking or another can do, you know, some, one can be like lead the town, one can build houses, you know? Like, there's an equal distribution of labor across people, group of people. So instead of like farming and plowing the fields and, yeah. So that's pretty much what job specialization is. We have, so once these people are settled down, there's towns and villages. Villages became towns, towns became cities, and cities eventually became civilizations or societies where population increases and you know, people started to have these like societal rules, like they have religion, they have art, or they have writing systems. So civilization is recently represents like how far humanity has come since the hunter-gatherer system back then, where like, I can name examples, like examples include, like you might, you might have heard of it during Unit Zero, like Mesopotamia and Middle Middle East, Egypt, China, those are good examples, so. There are societies, and once, when you have a society, you have, most of the time, you have a centralized government, so. It's getting, the society is getting too huge to manage. So you need someone to oversee everyone, at least a figure to like maintain authority, maintain balance, order, peace. So that's the purpose of centralized governments, so there's always a ruler on the top. And this is where the hierarchy starts, you know? Hierarchy means basically like a pyramid where status, where the ruler is at the top, we have some officials, we had the religious people. We're gonna go over that later in depth, but there's the working class, and there's the common people, and these are the slaves. So that's what we call a centralized government, where it's systematic, where it's organized, and it's more, I mean, makes sense, it's more convenient, you know? So how does civilization expand, you may wonder? So they expand via conquest. So diplomacy was a thing, trade was a thing, where they like peacefully go, let's talk about stuff. But that wasn't really how it worked before. Leaders were more, had more of a one-track mind, where they just want to conquer. They want to gain power, they want to gain respect. And how are you gonna do that exactly? It's not, you can't just talk, you can't talk to people, but what's a better way than just forcing people to, to, you know, bow down to you and use, you know, your powers? So that's pretty much a concept of conquest, and we're gonna see that more in the empires, like civilizations that grow successfully, they usually, we call them empires. So examples include the Persians or the Incas or the Aztecs or the Romans. They're all empires, they're all familiar words you've heard of. They're all, most of them expanded by conquest. So we have social hierarchies, I did mention that. So it's, once again, it's the pyramid, where we had the ruler, the officials, and the religious people, the working class, the common people, and the slaves. By the way, if you think of going too fast, don't worry, just drop a comment below. Don't worry, we're chilling out here, okay? Next, we have religions. So societies, leaders usually use religion to justify their authority. So let's say, once again, let's go back to example of Mesopotamia and the Middle East. This one guy named Hammurabi used polytheism, like he used, he said to the people that, oh, everyone, everyone was like, why are you leading us? Who told you? And he was like, oh, it's the gods, they literally allowed me to become a leader. So you gotta respect that, man, and they were like, okay. So they used that to justify authority. So in Egypt, they used the sun god Ra. China, they used, this is called Mania of Heaven, where whoever new ruler is, he was saying that, he was claiming that, oh, the older people are getting too frivolous, there were being, there were two lacks in the rules, so we had, we need to change. So, but overall, religions are belief systems that pretty much dictated how they lived. So if you're, let's say Christianity, back then, it was more conservative. It believed that you should live a holy life, like if you just stared at a, if you just stared, it's like, it's really ridiculous back then. I mean, not Christianity, but in general, like if you stare at a rock, you're a sinner, something like that. It's kind of ridiculous, but anyways, religions were also a common feature in ancient civilizations. Next, we have trade. So you can maintain a civilization just by itself, but at the end of the day, like economically speaking, you need someone else, like from the outside. So like, we call it the barter system, where you like, you give something, like it exchanges two different things to another, between two parties. So let's say like, I want, I want an apple and they want an orange, and they have an orange, they have an apple. So we just switch back. So that's pretty much how resources spread, and it's part of the economy, and that's part of how dependence works, like how trade relationships work, where you want, they need each other, because they have one thing that the other doesn't have. And trade is like more responsible in like spreading ideas, cultural ideas, so like religions or just culture, like Greek culture. I can see like nowadays in America, like we have the Greek pillars, and we have like, we have like, you know, it's pretty much the same today, it's a continuity, pretty much. Alright, feudalism, that's more of a more technical word, so. And this is more evident in empires once they've fallen. So in between two empires, like that chaotic period where they're like fighting for the top, that's usually where feudalism is. So this is where nobles, like higher level people, like nobles, give peasants or slaves, like the people below them land. It's like a give and take, like I'm a noble, let's say I'm a noble, and like someone else is a slave or peasant, or like, I can give you land, because it's so chaotic here, you need protection. I know you need protection, so I'll, I can take you in, but you need to work for me. You have to give your time and labor for me. So that's pretty much how feudalism works. So this is how feudal lords maintained, maintained like influence and wealth through agriculture. This is because of the give and take system, and we call that feudalism. Last, we have isolation. That's not the term, don't worry. That's just the general, like, if I would describe like the empires back then, they were pretty isolated. They didn't try to, like the Incas didn't go like, oh, I know my buddy America down there, no. I mean, maybe my buddy from Europe there, no, they weren't like that. So they were isolated, so that means they were focused on building on like their own society. They didn't reach out to each other empires, they focused on their own development in the early centuries. And except for like Rome, Greece, and Prussia, they were like close together. Uh, there was an exception, so like they fought each other, but like those like lands are distantly far away. Those like lands are distantly far away, they didn't really interact, but this will soon stop in unit one. Because there are more interactions and most of the things I mentioned earlier in unit zero carried on. But here are some extra things that became stronger or became prevalent, so empires, I mean, they were already. There back then, but by by this period, like empires are the generic term, like they're the mainstream like um term like. In they instead of like everyone's like, wow, it's an empire, uh not just another empire and. Examples include like the Incas, the Holy Roman Empire during this period, the Byzantines and our favorite, the Mongols, so. That's pretty much, pretty much, yeah, empires. And with empires come new political structures, so while there's a mainstream guy, the empire, there are some other terms, like some other people were like, I wanna be a. I wanna be bandwagon, like they're like different, there are some other um oops, there are some other. Forms like caliphates for is the Islamic caliphates, we have the Mongol Khanates, like it's just different terms. But pretty much overall, the structure is similar, so we have European city-states and like nomadic tribes. And we can see a link, like a close link between religion and politics, so this is more in Europe, so if you went over. Jillian's stream earlier, she briefly touched on this, but political leaders usually um in societies, they all should have religious leaders. In some cases, and as you know, um in hierarchy, like religious leaders like are on the top group, so. So they're they're pretty much intermingling together, so that continued and they do hold influence over the region, so. If those two fight, it's not a good thing, yeah, so we don't want that, but that happened, but. The to emphasize, we're gonna emphasize like their link, there's a link, like they were close together, so yeah. We have trade routes, humans are very adaptable beings, like you can tell, like back then, they were just going over mountains and like. But eventually as they explore out there, they do discover very convenient trade routes to barter their spices and textiles, their their products, so. So there's something include the Silk Roads and then once they had boats, they had the Indian Ocean Trade Network. In Africa, there was a Transharan trade route where they went over the desert with camels. And with that comes navigational tools and ships or ships, like like um. People didn't stop at iron tools, it humans are very curious individuals, so when you had a quest to just be better. And to try to outrun each other, so once the compass, the astrolabe, sailboats. And even the horse saddles, so people can ride horses or develop, they just went like, oh, heck, I'm going to like, I'm going everywhere, so. That's how they advanced in terms of trade. We also have patriarchy, where at this point in history, twelve hundred to fourteen fifty, missionary, um not missionaries, but um. Women were still disadvantaged, like they were still expected to maintain the household, they're expected to raise the children, to do the chores at home, um. And while while the men wanted wars and work as artisans merchants, there were exceptions. But for the most part, in the general manner, in a general sense, um patriarchy persisted. We have missions that 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 usually comes with um trade, but missions are. Those like um, it's how um people like spread religion, like some people called missionaries, spread the word of um. The holy texts or their god and at this time, uh missions typically a company like merchants when you traded. And so like in East Asia, there was Buddhism in Europe and. Um there's Christianity and there's Islam in the Middle East and there's Judaism, like. At this point, there were people were thinking like, oh, we should expand a religion, like we should expand a religion, we spread a word and. That's pretty much how missions work, I think I saw a question earlier, never mind, okay, we can keep going.
That was for me, I'm sorry.
I don't know, you're good, they're good, okay, so next, interregional reactions. So that's the general trend of this entire circle, so back then, people were so focused on. Building on themselves, like improving themselves now, they're just aware of the fact that empires and places existed, like there's these records. There's these ideas, so usually the most of the most like interactive people are the scholars, so. Scholars went from one place to another, like they were searching for knowledge, they want to know more about about these other empires, they want to know more about the outside world, so. So yeah, we had the scholars, we have the merchants that traded with people, with other people. We have the leaders that led armies to conquer smaller societies, all those are part of international reaction, interactions, so. Keep that in mind as you read through the book or your unit. Next, we have cultural diffusion, so that comes along with trade, with conquest, with pretty much everything else, so. Anything that involves like two people from different societies, you can expect an exchange of ideas, so let's. So even diplomatic interactions, like foreign ideas were brought back to home, that's a huge theme back then, um where um. You know, that's how Christianity spread, that's how Islam spread, or just just worried about like these leaders like Genghis Khan, how the noise is infamous. Is that's because like people spread the word and that's why we call it cultural diffusion. And we have intellectualism. As travel became popular, intellectuals, like scholars started to explore, once again, they started to explore. Regions in search of knowledge, they want to document the world, they want to draw maps, they want to transcribe documents in their own languages. So a good example was that in the Golden Age of Islam, there's this house, like it's like a huge library called the Baghdad House of Wisdom. Some of you might have heard of it out of nowhere, but that's usually, that's that's a place where back then, people, everyone gathered there from everywhere. Where they read about math, science, literature, I know I write your favorite subjects in school, but yeah, they attracted scholars, so. That's a part of intellectualism, like back then, people were so reverent of religion, now starting to become like. Hmm, let's think about this for a moment, like the times, this is where logic starts to pop up, but not fully yet, but just like. This is where the length is of it, so. So that that's on unit one, so if you have any questions, you can drop, oh, you can always drop them down here and any questions before I go? Alright, we can keep going, so. So that was that was a quick, um that was the brief overview, yeah, to summarize things in a nutshell, so. Um here's some, I don't know, I don't really get no good transition, but like here's a good, here's some tips and tricks like to add on to. To Jamal's textbook idea about like reading, here's some additional like things you should keep in your mind as you go over the course. And we're like, we're like one month in, so or less than a month in, so here you go. One, number one is to brush up on your book app, so you might notice, actually go, but um. There are some words that are really challenging, um. I mean, when they when they when they read, when they when they when they laughed at AP World, I was like, what's proliferation, we know there's like these huge words, big words, people throw in. Textbooks or even multiple choice questions by teachers, so what I would do is. If um it's possible, look at the root of the word, so the example I have there is monotheism and you might hear mono lots like monocle or. You know, um mono, monomial, I know math, so so and you might be familiar with it, if you if you are familiar with it, you would realize that mono means one. So that's a good start, like you can start in that, like you can build it up, and then that's where you use your context clues or look at definition. Once again, AP loves using big words in exams, so another tip you can use is that if you see a word, just. Have a sheet of paper near you, just write it down and then write, 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 compile a list of it. And then by the end of the day, you can look at the definition in Google and by the end of the year, if you keep doing that and they're like, yeah, the definitions here, you have a perfect cheat sheet. It's gonna be on, so that's another strategy to keep in mind.
Could I also add something?
Yeah, 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 you can.
Uh, one thing that helped me was making flashcards, so we had to make flashcards a week, I thought that was very helpful. And you guys could just go back and revise those once it's time for you to actually study and take that AP test in May, so that's just one strategy as well, continue.
Alright, yeah, that's a good strategy, actually, I'm trying to pull up like, we have like these like flashcards, like it's like. We have like these flashcards, like cards and no cards or whatever you call them, like those are good, like actually try like. Don't like just like copy someone else's work, like just actually try, it's actually enjoyable once you get used to it, so. Again, that's an accomplishment, alright, take notes, like at this point, it's kind of repetitive, like, I know, I need to take notes, but like. I'm not, I'm not focusing on like what the action taking notes, I'm focusing on what to take note on, so don't write down every single event, like, oh. Um this guy died in sixteen thirty four, no, that's not gonna help you, like you don't have to write every specific person, it's one, you're just wasting um. Pencil lead and two, in the long run, it's not gonna help. But instead, do take note of the big picture ideas related to the themes, so like you call it spice tea or inspect, so it usually, it stands for social. Political interaction with environment, cultural and economic, so like you can draw like a T chart or whatever you want, but like focus on like. What's like, you know, the social structure or the politics behind something or or how the bubonic, let's say like the the plagues. Of how like populations grew and shrunk or how religion played a role, like focus on the big picture ideas. And how like technology evolved, like you wanna focus on those ideas because in the long run, they're gonna help you, that's gonna help because one, you know. You have a general idea how things are going and two, um it's good, I mean. You you feel you feel like you feel like you understand a course more than just mindlessly writing down, um you know, uh World War One happened in nineteen nineteen. Eighteen, ten, something like that, you know, so you you get an understanding of the basically the course. Next, we have number three, maximize your resources, so. If you're really not a textbook guy, even like you, even like I tried the textbook strategy, I'm done, I don't wanna read. You don't have to stick with your textbook, there's a lot of resources online, especially today, twenty nineteen, there's a lot of resources online. We have Quizlet, there's Crash Course, which I really recommend, if you haven't, still don't know what Crash Course is, like John Green is the go. Okay, Freemanpedia and Fivable, Fivable has a lot of streams, so like this is one of them, but like we have a lot more. So we have lots and lots of sites online, like take advantage of that.
Uh again, with the Fivable, they offer so many like. Uh analyzing of your essays, we'll help to grade them, we also have different resources that you guys could go and check out. And it's just five dollars, like you guys really should take advantage of all the resources that you guys have.
Yeah, you get actual feedback, I mean, if you wanna save money, we're available like every day or every other day, you just. You know, go, so next we have, okay, here's a good one, so. You know, people always say, don't procrastinate, do your homework, I swear it didn't help, but like. We all know it's not gonna happen, like we're gonna get to that point, like I wanna watch my Netflix series, like I wanna, I don't care, and then like you're gonna worry eleven PM, but enough of that. So like, here's a new tip, like procrastinate productively, so what I did is. Like, I mean, it works, if it works, it works, so if you feel like you're tired of doing your math homework, like what I usually do is like, instead. Heading to the bed and chilling out with the homies, I just, I just go, I just, you do do something else, like do another homework, like you may be tired of math. But you're not tired of world history yet, so like you you're good, so it's what I did before, so. Instead of let's say, if you're tired, in tennis in general, if you if you're tired of doing world history, you can go, you can finish your Spanish or French homework, so. It's still gonna be productive, it's gonna be a win-win, it's not, it's still procrastination, but it's productive procrastination, so, uh huh. Last one, this is more of a question thing, so do it, so I just said earlier, to focus on the big picture, so you may wonder like. So should I just have to like skip through them, don't remember them, no, that's not the point, so. You just don't have to remember, just how do we remember every single battle in World War One or the name of each eleven Hindu caste system? Um focus, once again, focus more on the big ideas and like, I I mean, unless they're emphasizing class, like. Eventually, you're gonna hear more about industrial revolution or World War One, you should keep that in mind, like terms of priorities, but. Once again, you should focus more on the big ideas, because they're gonna help you in the writing section of the AP test. So there's gonna be a stream soon about LEQs and DBQs, but generally, you wanna use. These inventive people you remember, like the Mongols or World War One, as historical evidence, like you wanna use them as the 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 examples. And you wanna use like, let's say here, we're talking about trade routes, we have the Silk Roads, we have the Indian Ocean Trade Networks, they're the Transharan routes. So if your question is asking about trade, then you can boom, I know, I know the Silk Roads and I can use this, I know the Transharan trade routes, I can use this. So they're only good for evidence and while the big picture ideas is where you use your analysis, where you connect these examples to what. The question is, so example, like how did trade shape development of empires? So we can use like, oh, the Silk Roads, you can use example like that, and like, oh, you can say like, oh, people did this and did that, so you can make the connections and. Honestly, that offers a better connection to things and just mainly blindly naming examples. So they wanna look, maybe greatest one to look at explanations and see how complex they are, to see. How much you know about world history, how you can apply this to real life, so once again, it's pretty much it, so.
Hold on, uh Jed. Hold on for a sec, could you go back to that same slide?
Um you know, this one?
Yeah, yeah, just no, go after it.
Oh, okay, yeah, okay.
Okay, going off those uh big ideas, those key concepts, make sure you guys know them thoroughly. If you guys don't have time to read the book, make sure you watch a video or like go on YouTube or use Fivable. Make sure you guys know those big ideas, know those big themes and know those key concepts, that's just what I'm trying to reiterate to you guys right there, yeah, you can continue, yeah.
Alright, that's pretty much it for the content and the tips and tricks, so we're ready for Q and A. So we're gonna spend the last fifteen minutes just to for you to ask questions, so. You're calling, or you just hear crickets or. We're we're, you're gonna ask us about anything, when you talk about content, you can talk about specific terms for what something is, you can talk about events, you can just talk about how life is going.
Just anything.
Yeah, anything on this panel, honestly, so we're gonna be here, so. Feel free to ask, guys.
Just wanna give a shout out to uh Eric, I see you in the uh what uh the live stream, so just wanna say hi. So guys, if you haven't done the polls, they're still there for you guys, if you want to try them out. I'm also adding one now about Jed's informational session. Jed, do you have any like uh uh reading tips or like studying tips when it comes to AP tests?
Hmm, um, I mean, I was the one kid that binged, I mean, I'm not, I mean, I I know, I mean, I may not be the first person, but like, I can say for sure that. Don't study, uh I know it's too early, but like, don't be that guy, try not to be that guy that studies like everything the night before the AP test. You may have done it in small test, but it's not gonna work in an AP test, so don't, please.
At least two or maybe one or three months, depending on what type of student you are, just start studying. For the AP test when it's in May and make sure you guys know your key concepts, cuz they're gonna show up a lot on your. DBQs, your LEQs and your SAQs.
Yeah, if you're a visual person, just um you can watch, once again, you can watch Crash Course or Fivable, like if you're not, you know, the reading person, you can just visually look at. You know, like stuff like these, like presentations or videos that um if you're a visual person, that's gonna help, whoever. Question, what are your tips for writing a strong DBQ, so. This goes back to the to the, well, okay, let's see, hmm. You can start, I mean, you have something to do um before I before I continue, but okay, DBQs are. Very interesting for me, like either, they're good better than LEQs because they give the answer to you, you just have to organize it. You know, you need to like put it together, so um I would um. I would, I would, well, if you if you work on your reading skills, like it would come handy because you wanna read and skim while circling. Circle out and um like circle out and highlight all the important information from there and then. You can like, you can like group them together, you can group them together because. You're gonna need to make an argument out of it, usually give the prompt, but you need a good, you need to like make your own argument, obviously, so um. You wanna start in that and then.
Could I also answer, could I?
Yeah, yeah, I need like a call for, yeah.
So I would do is just make sure you analyze those DBQs, uh the the documents thoroughly. What I would normally do is uh say. What I would normally do is uh, say if this one supports my argument or if this one doesn't. I make sure to outline that on my paper cuz they give you an allotted fifteen minutes to analyze those DBQs, so make sure you use it time wisely. Also, what I would do is in that time that I'm preparing my documents and saying. If this supports my argument or if this doesn't, I also outline if there's any bias in those documents. So that I'm thoroughly analyzing them uh, to the fullest extent. And so that it supports my argument and it highlights my claim of what I'm trying to make. I hope that answers your question kinda sorta hopefully.
Yeah, I got a better response now. So pretty much a DBQ is about like. Identifying, like reading documents and identifying like the context or the purpose, like you're trying to identify like what the author is saying or what, who the audience are. And then you want to like, they're usually they have similarities, you wanna group them together. And then there's always that one guy that's like a counterargument, so you can add that for complexity, but the point of the DBQ is to see how well you could analyze text, like just be reading. Like in the, based on the information they give, unlike how um. You know, you can make an argument out of it. And like Jamal said, you know, you wanna group them together, you wanna read them thoroughly, thoroughly and. Make the best out of fifteen minute reading period. So hope that answers the question, Pareen.
Oh, also, also another tip is correlating those to key concepts and. Events that happen beyond that specific time period will also help you guys in writing your DBQs. So Emily has a question. She says, going off the last question, how often would you do an example DBQ? Uh, do you mean by writing?
Uh, like here, like we do practice or. Yeah, because we're talking about like, are we gonna do like a DBQ here, like we're gonna do some practice? I know there's a stream for. LEQs, I'm not sure about DBQs at times sooner, but there's definitely gonna be one, so keep uh, keep an eye, but. Yeah, we were saying something, Jamal.
If you're personally gonna do DBQs, uh, uh, make sure you practice those documents. That for the past AP World exam, cuz they're really helpful. Just like say you could go to two thousand and seventeen and practice that. Uh, DBQ and just analyze them, just practice a lot, how often I did them. I tried to do at least one LEQ a month, one SAQ a month and one DBQ a month, just to. Get my skills uh, up to par with what I expected myself to have and as well as my t- teacher. So yeah, anything to add?
Hmm, yeah, so she's talking about practice DBQs. I guess we can do once, I mean, we we also want your feedback, guys. So. If you want, this is, this is not the last study session we're gonna have. So if you want to do practice DBQs, then we can take it into consideration and we're gonna have one. Next soon for people in the East Coast and we have one soon also for the people in the West Coast. So that's gonna work out and. We're gonna consider that. Thanks for pointing it out, Emily, DBQs, we'll keep that in mind. Anything to add?
Uh, no, I think you said it all.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's actually interesting. So um, any more questions? Editing under the sun, just like a lot.
Uh, there's another poll if you guys wanna check that out. Uh, yeah, about Jed's unit oh, one and zero.
Oh, yeah, actually, no, let me change my vote. Yeah. Okay.
Okay, just gonna recap what I uh, kinda said about the textbook. First day, I would review those titles, those questions, those pictures and everything like that. And then the second day, I would read the topic sentence. And the third day, I would just read everything in general. And then after that, I would make my notes. Make sure they're correlated to the key concepts and. Yeah, and if you guys aren't really into taking notes, uh, you have your flashcards, you have Fivable as a resource. You have online as well, YouTube, stuff like that. And you have other practice, practice places where you can go. And like sharpen your skills for when it comes to taking that test.
Yep, you said it.
Wow, it's really quiet. I know, uh.
Yeah, also, yeah, I'm I'm gonna just add like a, you know, iceberg, like what's your favorite time period last year as an AP student? Like, you know, there's like. Back then, if I was modern, there were six historical periods. So what's your favorite?
Uh, mine would actually be a unit, I don't know, I don't know, period six.
Oh, the last one, yeah.
Yeah, I have the last one. Cuz it was very modern, I like the modern age, who wouldn't? What about you?
Mine was a post-classical, so now you know that as actually unit one, so. Part of it's from unit one, so like twelve hundred to fourteen fifty, because you get to see how empires rise and. More empires rise, so like, and plus there's the Mongols. You're gonna hear about Mongols, you're not familiar with them yet, but they're cool.
If you guys are a John Green fan, he like stresses the Mongols being like the source of everything. That's what I know, yes, the Mongols. What, what, what was your like expectation into going into AP World? What were you expecting?
I mean, when I was a freshman, I took this as a sophomore, I'm a junior now for context, I expected like way too much content, but. But I mean, our teacher did a great job in like focusing on what you need to focus on. So I was expecting like, because. When I first got the book before school, it was just a thick book, like thousand page book, which was.
Was this true or textbook?
Yeah, yeah, um, it's. But I don't, like, I was like, I don't like this, but once he got the course and you watched the videos, it's actually interesting, you know, to get to see how. You know, some interesting people, if you um, if you, you know, closely read your book or watch videos. So. I expect it to be way harder, but it's actually fun and interesting, especially, especially once it gets modern, because you can relate to it.
Yeah, what about you? Going in, I was like, it's gonna be the hardest course ever because last year only one person passed the AP test. Cuz it was the first time where they had it on my school, I was a sophomore. And so I was just expecting it to be this meticulous uh, body of knowledge that I had to study every single week for, but like. My teacher really made it fit to our needs. Cuz, okay, I'm in mock trial and so we had to do a trial on Genghis Khan and. Yeah, that was really cool. And we also did a trial about Truman and like him doing the bombing, which was like really interesting and really fun.
I'm moving to your school. But yeah, so this, this like, this is our book, like our book, that's what we use. So it's fifteen hundred pages, but. When, once again, I first got this was really intimidating, but you know, you get to see a lot of fun stuff, but some, some are boring, but some are very good. So. It's gonna be worth it. Glad you're taking AP World, people.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure you guys will do fine. It, they like shorten the body of knowledge, so it's just AP Modern now. Yeah, so you guys could do good. I feel like all y'all could pass.
Guys are here now. If you're watching Fivable here, you're at a good pace, like, okay. I mean, I discovered, I mean, I mean, I really discovered, like, I use Fivable more like weeks before the AP test. So, I mean, sure, it works, but. You're here right now, we're doing our job and so this is a good, once again, it's a good study resource. So glad you're here, guys.
I remember when like it was time for me to take the AP test, my teacher just introduced Fivable and it was like. Maybe a month or two and before the time, like the AP test was supposed to be administered. And I was just like stressing out and so like Fivable really eased my like anxiety. And it was just like easier when I, when it came to taking the AP test.
Yep. So we can extend for like another five minutes, but if you have more questions, once again, don't be shy, guys. That's why we're here. Oh, yeah, are you a book, are you a book person or a video person, like in terms of like studying?
Studying, I would say both, both to be honest, cuz I use the book a lot for referencing and evidence fit likewise, but then videos. They really simplified everything for me.
That's true. Oh, yeah, it's pretty much, come to think of it, yeah, if I, I'm gonna take that question back, it's like, feels like it's more of a boat, a combination of boats, so.
Any questions, guys? Just please. Yeah. So I think that that about wraps up everything we had to offer to you guys. I hope you guys really enjoyed it and found it interesting. And if you guys are not subscribed to any of Fivable channels, make sure you go right now and subscribe to our Twitter, our Instagram and our YouTube. Just so you guys know the content that's coming out or the upcoming content that we stream here. We have upcoming LEQs and DBQs and stuff like that coming out. So make sure you guys stay tuned for that. Anything to add, Jed?
Hmm, we have good memes in the Instagram, so if you're ready. If you're like, I don't wanna follow these, like we have memes that are really academic and so relatable. Once it's like, especially if you're done with the AP class, you just look back and you're gonna, you're gonna be like smile at least, like, oh, that's funny. You wanna, you don't wanna miss those memes. Yeah, I know you people, y'all want, y'all just want the memes, but. And the content, sure, but.
So that's it, guys.
Yep.
Bye.
I mean, yeah, like one last call for questions, but like, yeah, alright.
If you guys have any questions, uh, there's Instagram and there's also like. Yeah, you guys could always like do it there.
And you can always ask a person in the next stream. I mean, yeah, they're open for it, so don't worry.
We have a lot of streamers, trust us, like there's a lot.
Yeah. Alright, okay, so this is the end. So once again, thank you so much for tuning in. And this concludes our study session for Sunday AP World. Alright, see you, guys.
Hey, guys, have a good day.
Bye bye.